It's always cold in here, Roseanne.
It's because you're sitting next to John.
That's what it is.
Sorry, John, it was there, I had to take it. Sorry. Okay, we all set?
Yep.
Okay, well, good evening to everybody and welcome to the Eastlime Board of Education meeting. We called the meeting to order a little bit just after 6 o'clock and went into executive session for the purpose of discussion of safety for board members. We are out of executive session now and and with that, we're on to having the Pledge of Allegiance. So would everybody like to rise? Join myself and Roseanne Hardy.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, public comment, did we have any written?
Nope.
Okay, and we would like to address the public concerning any matter with the board. Anyone would like to address, raise your hand. Beth? Yeah, go up to the podium and aim an address. And again, we're still with a three-minute time constraint, so be aware.
Hey, you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
My name is Elizabeth Montello, I live at the 12th Black Oak Drive. In my office tonight are history, excellent new family service. Thirty odd years ago, I was also a student in this school and an excellent English teacher. She covered the Arthur Miller play Crucible, which is soulful commentary on human nature and a perfect example of those who failed from the past are being repeated. I made a vow then of high school students that I would speak up against people acting as an oppressive law in a manner possible. I strongly support teaching the full, nonpartisan, un sanitized history in our schools so that students may learn from the past, good or bad. This teacher also taught us Mark Twain's tirade about Connecticut Yankees being our first court. Her question to us was, why were the Yankees' most fervent followers all the young people? Of course, the answer is younger, naive, and ignorant and easily influenced. Or simply happy with using that fact against facts. I have previously expressed my concerns for the quality of the Equity Institute service. I believe the questions were biased for a pro or for a response. Remember, equity is not quality. Equity is Marxist and socialist in nature. The Equity Institute was only started in 2019. They don't have a long-term record.
Jamie clarified that everything that comes before the board is a draft. And so my question is that if we then are cited in the committees, is the term "draft" removed from the document?
No, I see, yeah, yes, it should be, yeah.
That's why I wanted to make sure that that actually came forward. And also, and another follow-up on that is that part of the discussion was if it was, it was like we're adopting it as a draft because the thing is going to be easily modified, but if it's coming forward, it's not a draft. Then the question, so, you know, what would be the process? This is an informational question. What would be the process if the committee understood that that document could be revised? You know, part of our discussion last week was, John brought up a very good point. He said that most municipalities, good enough is something for us to go forth with, you know. And you mentioned how that is that good enough might be good in municipality for paving contract, but I don't think good enough is good enough for kids. I'm always going to be working towards trying to get that draft brought up to the standard where minimally, I think we, in the committee, recirculated documents that had at least 30 different references to read journal articles. And it would be great if that document could be supplemented, you know, referenced and anchored in the research that was behind it. So if something came up like that to rectify the document, if it's in the original question, if it is in the board minutes, you know, as a final document, and the committee decided that they wanted to revise the document, would it then have to come forward to the board for another round of approval and vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it would, yep. Yep, and that, and the committee is, is, I would imagine, I'm sure that the board would strongly support the committee because looking at their tasks before them and if as they do their work, they say that that there needs to be a modification to the charter that, as they've seen it, because they've done more work and have, you know, certain realizations and so on, that should be brought forward to the board and then and made the recommendation to revise the charter. And then the board would review that and have that conversation. And then hopefully would see the logic that the committee would present.
So then if we're going to, these minutes have to have that report appended to them to be accurate?
Yeah.
Do we then proceed with voting on the minutes even though they're incomplete? Or do we put out vote until the minutes are complete?
We could, we can, if people, is that we would include the charter as presented with the word "draft" removed from it. And if we made the motion, Kate made the motion and Jill seconded it. If they would see that that, if Kate would say that that's, that she would be okay with that, with her motion, Jill would second it, then we could then, we could then vote on the amended motion, so.
So then the motion to the, once it's been approved that we can modify the draft to having it be official? Is that what we want to say?
No, I was just saying that what we want to amend, we want to amend the minutes to include the charter as was approved, but with the word "draft" removed from the title of the charter. Okay, and then, and then that would, that would make, you know, that would make, make sure that we have that. And that would be attached to the minutes.
So you're saying she'd be as a link?
Well, yeah, or, yeah, however, Jackie.
I just, I have to, I don't even know why we're going back and forth, but honestly, we're going to wordsmith now. So it's coming forward as the draft in that meeting, so in the meeting.
Meeting, that's it says.
It should say "draft", and then moving forward, it doesn't have "draft" on it anymore because it's been voted off.
Right, once voted, I'm going to approve this all.
All right.
Okay. So Kate, you're okay with that?
Right, absolutely.
Jill, you all right?
Thank you, thank you for that explanation.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
Do we need to vote again, though?
But no, no, we're, yeah, just any other discussion on the minutes, the minutes, anybody else?
So we amended the motion.
We amended the motion, yep.
I'm going to vote no because it's micromanaging.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Anybody, okay, so everybody all set to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed?
No.
John, Jamie? And Candace abstained?
Abstained.
You abstained, that's one, two.
Yeah.
So passes, okay, so. Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, let's move on. Reports, and we have a selectman representative here. This Roseanne Hardy is here with us.
Welcome, Roseanne.
Sorry, if I didn't get the three-minute memo. I don't think that's a typical idea. So as with your board, much of our discussion time has been taken up with how to spend money that we receive from the government. Only to find out that most of the things that we wanted to do, we can't spend money.
Right.
So this is taking a little bit longer because obviously we have to, we need to get, have legal advice on everything. And unfortunately, we can't deduct the cost of the legal expenses and apply it to the American funds. Sort of like the round table that I've just been listening to. So we are now on the second dispensation of money. And this has been approved by the Board of Finance, and I'll just give you a brief rundown because we've had to eliminate half of the list. And so now we're on the shortlist. So 54,000, we're just going to use round figures, 54,000 will be applied to the Ledge Light Health District and eight, almost nine, just short of $9,000 for the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. I grouped those together because those two organizations, which seem to be directly related to what the American Rescue Funds are supposed to be used for, they didn't get any money. So their request was, because these both serve area region, not just our town, 1% of our budget. So, so that is how that money was arrived. $25,000 for the Eastside Giving Garden. I don't have the figures, but every percent of the town meeting, but it's just absolutely amazing the amount of food that they have grown to donate. And this is certainly something that I think our community should be very proud of. And as I said, I host the summit, you will be attending the meeting. Just to be announcing shortly. $12,500 to Save the River, Save the Hills. And that will specifically go for the purchase of a compo boat, a replacement. This money is split between ourselves and Yawford, which is a good example of regionalization. And this is just a replacement of the previous compo boat, which is pretty much down the river. So, as I said, it's basically shared by Yawford, as we share the river. Although the boundary has never exactly been determined. Quite exactly, it seems that the riverbeds changed a few times over the years. But seriously, I think this is something that we can all appreciate because certainly the Indian River is one of our more valuable resources in the community. Provides a lot of jobs and certainly a lot of income from recreational uses. So we're fortunate, we have a partner for that. $12,500 to the American Legion and $9,000 to the FFW. They have both suffered great loss of money as they've not been able to operate during COVID, their usual fundraising expenses. And they have continued to help military families who are down and out during COVID. And so that is how we arrived at that amount of money. And some of it will go to necessary improvements within the buildings, but most of it is going to go to mediate the loss of revenue. $2,000 to the New London Homeless Hospitality Center. And we're fortunate that we have that facility as well. We do not have our own, and one that does provide for several Eastland families. So the list is shorter than we'd like. And this, we have many other requests, so we'll continue to work on this, as I'm sure you will be doing with your share of the funds. We will be, we're secondly having a special meeting tomorrow at 1:30 to set the date and time for the town meeting, which will be October 6th at 7 o'clock. And I hope that many of you will support the work of Selectman in Board of Finance's efforts to provide additional resources to our community. And I'll repeat that, it's October 6th at Town Hall at 7 o'clock. And our special meeting tomorrow afternoon will be very brief, it's just a century to set the date and the time.
Good.
We have the answer and questions.
Anybody having questions, Kate?
Well, I'm just wondering, hi, Roseanne, could you say, I'm wondering if there is any opportunity for the Giving Gardens to be a resource to us? We have some food insecurity ourselves, so that's what I'm suggesting.
I, I would assume that if there was an application, if there was an application made, that certainly you'd be eligible.
And I also think it would be a great opportunity for a relationship with some of our students to do, you know, we talk a lot about actual learning and in the field, no pun intended, but doing that kind of work where they could actually get their hands involved.
Well, mind I inquire, if the students are still getting a free breakfast and free lunch, are all students still eligible for that? And you don't think that some of the funds that you're receiving for the board would be eligible for that?
We have allocated them, all of them, with, we have, we do have some money left over. It could be that we could discuss. And for this year, we've allocated all of them, but look at that.
Acquisition, that's what I'm understanding, is problematic and difficult, that there's a supply chain that's choking. There's not an understanding of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So perhaps we could share, share the additional expense?
Well, I think what, what's going to happen too is, I think that supply chain might open up if they lift the restrictions, which is, I think, is forthcoming. So there's so many type restrictions on what we can receive, I think they might be opening that door. So that would help out immensely. So we haven't heard yet, one way or the other, but it's a possibility.
I'll resign that.
Yeah. Good, any other, any other questions?
Well, last time when Dan was there, Mr. Cunningham, he spoke, we spoke a little bit about DEI and just like as an initiative, there could be a more global kind of thing so that the Board of then isn't necessarily targeted as the only avenue and resource for kind of having conversations and opening up doors.
I'm not sure I'm following what it is you're.
So what, you know, just the idea that there has to be discussions of all levels with them, not just the Board of God, but also, you know, with our Board of Select people and other areas within town, there's conversations on that, to that regard.
Are you referring to anything specific?
No.
Okay.
Can I fill in just a few of the blanks because I think there are some? So we got the assessment and the review back for the DEI conversation. So that's where, actually, I believe it was you, Kate, that asked the question if any other constituents or any other outside entities were polled or brought in. Isn't that accurate? That's where it was.
Right.
Right? So, right, so they, they had not to participate in any of the surveys. And the, the, I can't remember the name, can you help me with the name of the?
Equity.
Equity, thank you, the Equity Institute, forgive me, had said that it was just consolidated basically for the district and that it hadn't gone out to reflect any surveys from specific boards or board members. So that's kind of where the conversation started. And she was asking Dan if that's something down the line that you or other elected officials, other boards, expanding out into the community more, would be willing to have those conversations? I hope I did. Try.
As Dan probably recorded, and I thank you for covering for me at the last meeting, but really early meetings are difficult for me, so.
Sure.
He held it for me. I did report, he did report back on that, and he and Mr. Siri are the subcommittee that are working on that. And I think that they are working on bringing forward some recommendations to the board. And likewise, if I might back up and say that the the American Rescue Funds, we have not opened that up yet to a wider group to come in and make requests because we're trying to work with the things that we know that we have gotten approved groups that are really in trouble right now. But we certainly will be working on this, and this is just, as for new folks, it's just the first round of funds. But it's far more complicated than we had anticipated.
Yeah.
We thought we would be able to help Historical Society, sure, to do other things for other community groups, and they're not eligible.
Right.
Good.
Thanks so much, Roseanne.
Very good. Okay? All right, yep, thanks so much. That brings us to our Eastlime High School student representative, which I see Sashi is up there on the screen. Hello there.
I'll just get right in, I guess. So, um, I'll start with what happened kind of last weekend, a little before that, since I haven't been able to see you guys. So last weekend, we had our dirt presentation, it went really well. Seniors were in the auditorium, the rest of the school was watching on livestream in their classrooms. And then we had our senior picnic on, at McCook's on September 10th, which was a great success. Um, for future plans, as of right now, Spirit Week is being held the week of October 25th, followed by a tentative homecoming dance on the 30th. And as of right now, it's outdoors, there's still a lot of playing that has to be going into it, but as of right now, it's held for the 30th. Um, the SAT is this Saturday, and there's a home football game this Friday night. Clubs are having a little trouble meeting, um, but they have been going after school and, like directly after school in person or online on Zooms throughout the night. Um, on that note, there was some concern from students. They were a little frustrated with the three lunch leads. And this is just a little bit of a consensus that I've come up with from talking and listening to people around the school and Senate members and such. So they just wanted me to express their concern about not having the ability to meet with their teachers. And clubs also lost a lot of their lunchtime. And also, someone brought up a good point that for test makeup or quiz makeup or lab makeup, they'd either have to come in early for school or at the end of the day, and it's been difficult for some teachers in that sense also. And I even heard that a lot of people on have lost their feeling of like almost independence, and they feel like this change in lunch has changed the culture of our school. And I know there's a lot that goes into that, but I just figured I'd give you what's kind of what the student body has been saying about it. So I hope that was, okay?
That's great.
Very good. Any, any questions for Sachi?
I have a question, maybe first Jeff, then Deb. The decision to go to three, which I know we had, like, we did last year, and, and is this a COVID decision? Or is this a permanent decision? Or are we assessing it or kind of what's the?
We did two last year, we did three, we did three because there's no way we could ever feed that amount of students, even with, with two. And that was one of the things that was discussed. Just, you know, having, I think over 600 kids are eating lunch every day. There'd be no way to get them through the lunch lines with one, with one lunch wave. So that was the, the main reason, a lot came from, you know, from Chris.
And that's because of the free.
Because it's all free.
Because it's all free. So the volume has gone up significantly.
Exactly, yeah, we're having over 1,800 lunches served in a day across our schools. And we just would never be able to feed kids at the high school.
Have we, let, I mean, it'd be good to communicate, make sure that the students understand that there's a operational rationale for, for doing that. And then is there, if, if it goes, I don't know what normal is, but let's just say it goes back to how it was pre-COVID, meaning people pay for lunch, so the volumes would go down and things like that. Would we consider, and it's not going to be this year, but would we consider in future years reassessing? Or are we assessing this, is this the right way to do it? Like, what's the?
Yeah, I mean, Deb, I mean, I know you're looking at it, you looked at it six ways to Sunday this year, but you know, I don't think anything's up there.
Original goal to have three lunches, but as Jeff said, we are serving over 700 lunches.
Yeah.
So it's just not possible to do less than that. We're constantly reevaluating what that looks like. I've had a quick look at it last year and this year, and I did talk to the SAGA about it in hopes of getting information out of why it's three lunch leads.
Yeah.
Just as an aside, this week is our first flex advisory, which is going to give kids an opportunity and teachers to both do club meetings or possibly meetings with their teachers. This is something else we're trying to provide back, give back some of that time.
That's good.
I had a question. Um, no, I was wondering, um, clubs are a big deal and I don't know whether there's going to be a club fair again or how, what that's going to look like. And I know that kids, um, you know, maybe, I don't know whether, what enrollment looks like here at Eastlime, whether all the clubs have lost some enrollment or whether they've managed to maintain it over time. But if the students are feeling as though there's a change in the culture and they're not getting access to the clubs, are they involved in the, in trying to come up with a solution that may be a multi-lunch wave solution? But at least they can be part of reviving their culture?
Yeah, and we're right now trying to redevelop, we're going to have a club fair. We're trying to actually figure out which clubs are running, not running. And that happens every year, you know, depending on the strategy we're going to commit. So as soon as we got back there, we're also trying to figure out that we're not just freshmen because last year we did.
Right, right. Are, are there, are there a group of students that have a voice in this decision-making process or?
Yeah, yeah, it varies from grade to grade, but yes.
Okay, Candace?
I just wanted to suggest maybe another option of communication. You could utilize the morning news and maybe have like a section on it and maybe talk about it a little bit, or even in the highlights, which I love that you're doing at the Eastlime High School, the highlights at the end of the week. That might be a spot for another way to communicate to the kids in this college.
Good.
Yeah, the highlights have been great.
It has been.
They've been, they've been great. I think that's more of a parent, I don't know if my kids are reading that, but.
I think you're right, but the school news is right there.
I agree with that.
That's something that they could utilize too. Anything and everything would be great.
The news show would be great.
Any other questions for Sachi? Okay, great. Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to our discussion action items. And I just wanted to get one point of clarification. Lee, I apologize. On the motion that we have on the minutes, were you a yay, nay, or abstain?
I am going to abstain because the meeting cut out for a little bit. And so I missed that conversation. So I don't feel like I have enough information to.
Yep. Thanks, Lee. Okay, you got that?
Thanks, thanks.
All right. So first item up under instruction is an update on COVID-19 and the executive order 13G.
Yeah, just following up on this one more time as this week starts our for those individuals that are testing. We have about 20 individuals that roughly are testing starting this week. They're testing on Wednesday. Those that are vaccinated and submitting their results, you know, by email link. So we'll be prepared for Monday. It's plenty of time between, you know, Wednesday afternoon and Sunday night or, you know, by Monday morning. So we have no issues hopefully with folks coming back to work Monday morning. In the States, infinite DPH is infinite wisdom. You know, we had rolled out all of our collection of vaccine information. And then we get kind of at the last minute, a declaration component or attestation. So we had to send it all out again and try and collect signatures from every single person, you know, so that, you know, was is still in process. We're down to about nine individuals that we're still trying to get that information from. So we did it twice, not not once. And I know that's people are busy and a little frustrated. And we were all frustrated at super that's for sure. But we are working with vendors as well. Friday afternoon, we received a vendor form, you know, to send for the same thing, per signatures and attestations from all of our vendors that all of those employees are either vaccinated or will be testing. So and we had already worked to communicate with them prior to that form coming out. So it's just the court carts a little bit ahead of the horse, I guess, in in many ways, or hasn't caught up, I should say, because we were trying to prepare for this week and, you know, to get an email from, you know, the Department of Health or the state on Friday afternoon, you know, for something that's supposed to be ready to go Monday morning is a little tight. So uh, unless nonetheless, we've we're off and rolling and, you know, we're we're good to go this week. We do have, the the state did allow a little further of a window too. If you don't, you know, again, we've got nine individuals left. We have until, you know, into early October to collect those final final signatures. So we're in in good shape there. So that that's been just a massive amount of work. And we want to thank our office, you know, our small HR department for the efforts that they put in, principals and the schools and all the staff as well for, you know, working that out with us and getting that information taken care of. So good. Thank you very much.
Where are we at with the extension of masking or not?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. The governor's executive order is supposed to be extended. Um, here it is Monday and I haven't heard a word. So John, you're in the state level at all?
Senate tomorrow, the the House.
Okay, all right. Somebody will know. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
With any date, like extension?
February 2022.
What were the numbers?
Eighty to sixty.
That's kind of surprising to me.
John, did you have something else?
Good question. So I know the state cut funding for administering those tests. So are we self administering and then are we paying for each test that folks are on?
We're not. We're not per the executive order. It's up to the individuals. But if they go to state sites, it's it's free. Yeah, they don't have to pay for it. So we provided a list of all the state sites and if more come out, we'll provide those as well. But I think people will walk into the location that they'll go and it's been free. We're down to nine. But no, we're down to nine individuals that haven't nine vaccinated individuals that have not signed off on the declaration yet. So we're still waiting for those. And 20 individuals probably were tested. Exactly. Yeah. But keep in mind, that's a floating number too, because we have coaches. We have it. It's very small, which is great. But, you know, we're we're not including like our winter coaches yet. So that group will come. So we've got all the fall coaches. So it just it's, there are so many, you know, you talk over 600 people and just trying to track them all down has been a.
And the average cost on tests is like $95.
I heard. Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure what the. Yeah.
Low end is like 65 and high is like 150. So.
Yeah. So hopefully it remains free for individuals. Um, yeah, we've not had no issues with bus drivers walking out. I know that's been a big issue across the state. You know, our our bus company, First Street, has done, you know, very well with staffing. We have not had one bus issue on Kim that I know of.
They have one sub, but that's better than no sub.
That's right. Yeah, they were working. There's two more in the pipeline, I think, from what Teresa Landt told me last week.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. And and actually, one of my students today informed me that the not only the busing issue in our town, but the the sports teams have been impacted because other towns have bus issues. So they can't get teams to be able to show up, they're rescheduling or having to come early or changing all kinds. I was just curious what the impact was here at Eastline with the busing. I also was curious on the subbing situation because I know in old line.
Yeah.
We we can't get anybody and they're they're dealing with sending kids to study hall, but at the middle school and elementary school, you can't send kids to study hall. So what are we doing?
Well, elementary wise, I don't know. It's been more significant at the high school. You and I have talked a lot with just because of the mass amounts of people. We've got a building, one building sub in each building. We actually were just adding a second one at the high school. But subbing wise, I mean, any hasn't been that bad that I've heard at the elementary level. Have either of you, the three of you heard any specific got any issues with having to combine a class at all or any of that nature?
No, we co-pair is and try to make it work one way or another. We did the same thing last year as well.
Yeah, but it is. Yeah, it's an issue, Bill. You're.
We're filling in-house with what we have.
We're covering classes, but. But it's it's a problem. And it's not going away. You know, we just and we're still have open positions, spare positions that we're still trying to fill. And some other certified positions too. We have tried everywhere. Indeed, things, you know, locations that we've never even tried before.
Yeah.
People are not out there. Unfortunately, we're trying to chip away at it, but they're just not.
I just want to ask one quick question. It was a while back, but we implemented more of a formal system for, at least that was my knowledge anyway, a formal complaint system with the bus company. That way, if there were complaints coming in from parents or things happening, it would go to the bus company. And then the bus company would come to us. That way we have transparency, right? I think that we should check on that.
Yeah.
I'm I'm hearing certain things and and I think that that needs to be checked.
Yeah, looking at it definitely. That's right. That was two or three years ago.
Yeah, for accountability and that kind of thing.
All right. Okay, so um, yeah, so that's that's where we're we're at. You know, we'll get things rolling with the first round testing again this Wednesday. You know, again, we are still trying to chip away with the sub piece, but and we are still, you know, having to quarantine. These are our slimming cases. We had a case today at high school.
So our numbers are significantly on the lower side.
They are. Our case numbers are very low. They're under they're under 10, I believe, you know, all in. Where other districts I know are a lot higher. We have a lot more cases than we have.
So that's a good thing.
Exactly. Yeah. Yep. We don't want to jinx it. But, you know, we'll see where the rest this week takes us.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We good on that? Okay, move on to the next item for discussion action. That's the cave board recognition award. And I know we've put the package together. I I reviewed the package. Jeff has reviewed the package. What we didn't do was we didn't include the package in the in the in the agenda for the board to take a look at it.
Yeah, that's my fault. I wasn't thinking that I wanted to share the whole recognition award with the board. So that's I I I'll take responsibility for that for sure.
So and a little bit of a change this year in the in the process that Cave is asking for a board, a board motion of a board approval of the.
Exactly. Because typically Tim just applies to this each year, a level one, level two. We obtain that, you know, each year through the cave caps convention. But this year they want the whole board to take a motion, you know, on that that submitted of the other leadership award. So I don't know, Timmy, if you want to.
If people are comfortable that I've Jackie and I put the package together and I reviewed it and Jeff has reviewed it. People are comfortable enough that we're asking for a level two recognition. We checked the appropriate boxes. But if people would want to defer until the board meeting next next week, next Monday, we can make sure that we get the package attached to the agenda.
Is this the same pack that you put together every year?
Yeah, same.
Yep. Yep.
I would like to see it.
I can even send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, let's send it out. Let's just let's do it. It'll be a quick item. Yeah, next week. Since we are meeting next week, so.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So let's move.
Just deadline for submission though.
Yes, October 1st. I I think that there's a little bit of a grace period there.
Just just we can vote on it now. I don't mean, I just and then we can send it out.
No, well, no, I.
Identify it as a late submit that's a late submitter.
Well, I'm sure typically they people are like. I think we'll be all right. Okay, uh, next item up, discussion. This is a follow up to the Equity Institute DEI audit report that we received at the September 13th.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last board, the last board meeting that we had, we had the presentation from the Equity Institute. We had some clarifying questions. We had a motion that we basically was for we're for informational purposes that we were not going to be taking any action, specific action on on that at that at that meeting. So but I I was just curious if people have a chance to take a little more look at it. Jeff, do you have any any opening remarks?
Um, no, I mean, I I had taken a look at it. We I kind of pulled for some important focus points that I thought were of most value. And like some of the things that, you know, were brought forward, you know, the pathways component especially. You know, the the working kid, you know, kids in the trades. There was a lot of good things. I mean, I think it really spoke to, you know, I know my focus, which is really about that sense of belonging for all kids this year. And and that's a lot of our all about our goal for what we're doing this this year. So I'll leave it open for discussion for all of you.
Anybody have any sharing further? I I certainly think it's it was overall very consistent with where our strategic plan was kind of aiming us or pointing us in the direction the path that we were taking. Like Jeff said, I think that there's some some very interesting points that that were raised, which were which were good. I would I didn't really see anything that was particularly, you know, like earth shattering, shocking or surprising. Some very good ideas on on some action steps or whatever. But I think consistent with kind of how we were how we've been going as well. So it was, I think it was a pretty pretty worthwhile exercise to go through, have another set of eyes, kind of look and listen. Candace.
Okay, so my understanding is that the audit report was now going to be moved towards the DEI ad hoc committee to review. Has that meeting happened yet or no?
Uh, yeah, yes, we did. We we met, what was it last last week, Monday?
Okay.
And again, it was kind of an open kind of conversation, kind of teasing out the kind of what we were just kind of kind of saying in terms of the messaging. I don't know. Let's see, Lee and Barry, you were you were part of that conversation. Anything? Okay, yeah. Lee, anything you want to add?
You tapped it off.
Yep. So anybody else have any 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 other thoughts about this? So I think will the the large diversity?
We already did. Yeah, yeah. We met last week as well. And we talked through these bullet points. Lee was part of that discussion as the the board reps. And yeah, they're they're reviewing it as well. And again, I pushed the that thought to want to pace ourselves, you know, in this work as well. And we're going to use it as a, you know, as a guide and the recommendations will take some and we won't take others. But, you know, we're going to use a lot of what they've shared and continue the discussions.
Good. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Anything else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is for discussion and action. And that's on budget transfers, which were reviewed at the FFO meeting that was at 4:30 today. So Jeff or?
I unfortunately was on another state regional call until 5:30. So I'm going to turn to Mariana and Mariana, you want to just kind of give an overview of that if you don't mind, because I missed that.
Yeah. So the first budget transfer is, I think we we discussed it just reviewed it like last week with March at the baseball field. So we are moving the funds from the tech line for team leader and 25,000 software to ARP funds and transferring the 100,000 to to big of what I call site facility improvement, which will be the baseball field. Items two and four are more what I would call housekeeping, making that I've worked in the past few years to just clean up funding lines. So there were just some employees that were charged to funding lines that were incorrect. So they catch that before I did the budget last year or this year. So just fixing that, the boys are charged the correct line and then moving the budget to align with that. And then the other item three is the special ed, point five special ed teacher, which we are able to cover the elementary salaries. We lose some teachers who are hiring or shifting to another position. We had, we hired teachers that were on the salary scale. So there's still a slight return for $300 deficit. But that will cover the fault of these teachers, the set teachers out. Some of the questions.
Eric, anything from FFO? Yeah, yeah, just the FFO did review it question. And we do recommend approval. And the other bigger comment is, these are very nice, well thought out with descriptions. We, you know, years ago, we got a whole list of transfers and you can make sense of them very clear. Mariana, thank you for for doing it this way. Because it's each one, it's very easy to understand and.
So with that, would you like to make a motion, Eric?
I would like to make the motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
Jamie seconded. Further discussion on this? Anybody?
Very. That's a good question. We had talked prior on the the report, the recommendations for the baseball field. And you talked about there are two parts of the document.
Yep.
Has that been consolidated? So it's clear what what we're voting for in terms of what's going to happen?
Yeah, we have the RP is been put together, right?
RP is put together. I actually just reviewed it today. So I'm gonna I'm gonna put it online, save it like tomorrow, put it in paper. So please, Chris, is expecting the bids in two weeks.
Can we get that on the, can we have that as an agenda item for the board meeting and get that out ahead of time? So people can review that to make sure that everybody's happy with what's in that.
Yeah.
In the we call it RF. Yeah. Then good. Yeah, yeah, that'll work. Okay, great. Okay, so any other discussion on this motion that we have on the table?
Can I just clarify with the RP?
Yeah.
We don't normally approve the RFPs or approve them or look at them or anything. I just want to make that clear. The Board of Ed doesn't vote on RFPs.
We have typically not, but I think that in this case, well, yes, that's.
I just want to make it clear. The Board of Ed does not.
I've never brought it before, but I'm happy to do it.
We have to bring every RP to us for approval. We know that, but this has been such a. I understand that, but I'm, I want to just say that. And then I want to go back to the document that keeps getting brought up. That is not our document.
Right.
That is the the company's document. If you want a correction made to it, we cannot make it because their documents are correct. I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Before we continue down that line.
And the RP is going to be out, so we can bring it, but.
Before discussion.
Yeah, there will just be for discussion. There won't be any changes. Yeah, we're not going to change.
Yeah, I think I just, yeah, I think. Yeah, I think I just, yeah, I think people want, we're going to just make sure that we know.
Well, that's why I want, I want to make it clear. This is not application. I don't want to start precedent of RFPs coming to us for approval.
John?
This is ESSER funds, though, right? So is that a different than the normal RFP?
She's moving money to.
Yeah, it's, no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so any other discussion on the motion?
I, I need to ask for clarification because, um, we're, we're exactly, we told that any use of rescue funds must be approved by the governing body.
So, yes.
So just set further, if there's going to be further use and it's going to be approved in with other things.
Well, we're, we're not using the ARP ESSER funds for the baseball.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, we're using those for tech. That's why with the tech transfer item in the budget, we're using them for tech, uh, technology in the operating budget.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Jay, all those favorite motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody who all oppose? And Lisa's aye, that's all that. Anyone who want to abstain? Okay, that passes.
All in.
Set with that. That brings us, uh, onto administration reports. And Jeff?
Superintendent, couple of, uh, we talked about the Southern staffing. I was gonna, I was gonna mention that. Bill, thanks for bringing that, uh, that up. Um, Jamie had mentioned about that press release, it was great regarding the credits that she'd earned through, uh, you know, through CAPE, um, the pool roof, uh, we're still, it was, I saw on the weekly update, Chris, uh, London put in, um, he pushed back on them to gain a little bit more clarity as to, uh, you know, their reports. So we're still waiting for that information. Um, and a cost, uh, cost number as well. So, uh, hopefully maybe by this Friday, we'll be able to put something in the weekly update and share out, um, at the next board meeting as well, if you want to discuss, we, we'll need to discuss that. Um, and then, uh, just want to thank the Daigle Foundation and Dan Daigle for, you know, all of her efforts last week, you know, with, uh, the activities that we did, and, you know, she helped to fund some of those activities, such, so she, John Morello, we split that cost between Eastline and Waterford. So, um, she really, uh, you know, stepped up and we appreciate, uh, all her efforts. I just want to publicly acknowledge Ann and the Daigle Foundation. Um, and then Tim, I'm not sure if you wanted to circle back with the, uh, the CAPE.
Yeah, I can do that now, or I can do it under, I can, yeah, just if, if, that's probably a good, good time to, to do this. So, um, as board chair, um, uh, I, uh, requested or asked if Kate Steele would like to, uh, replace me as the Learn Board Representative. Um, uh, and she has graciously accept, accepted. I've communicated to, uh, Learn, uh, about the replacement and, uh, and the week, the Thursday after Columbus Day, um, Kate and I are going to attend the Lord, uh, Learn Board of Directors meetings together, and I'll introduce Kate and, and, uh, pass, it's passed the baton. So I think it'd be, it's going to be wonderful, um, to have that. And I think, uh, um, it's a, it's a, it's a great group of people, and Kate Erickson is a wonderful, uh, executive director for Learn, and people are very, very nice to work with. So Kate will, Kate will enjoy it, and she'll also be a great, great contributor as well. And so, and the other thing is, is that, um, with the, uh, the idea or the, the concept that we can have a representative to CAPE, um, for a CAPE liaison, uh, that, uh, I asked Jamie if she would like to, uh, to do that. Uh, and, uh, she has, uh, uh, said yes. Uh, and I'm very glad that she is taking on that responsibility. So she'll be our CAPE representative. These positions, um, will be, as, uh, we go through this, uh, evolution, that the next board chair, whoever that person will be, will have an opportunity to review all of these things again and make those adjustments. Um, um, and, um, and that's, that will happen with the new board and the new board chair in December. So, but, uh, for now, I think this is a good transition, uh, except for, so.
Congratulations.
Jeff, anything else?
That's it. Um, that's it for now. No, it, it, it's just reminder, just sorry. Just remember, October 4th, our next meeting, um, we're bringing forth the improvement plans, um, but we're, we're keeping more of a condensed meeting. Um, that was really supposed to be the only topic, but we'll, obviously, we'll, we'll add, uh,
Yeah.
the, uh, this CAPE piece on, um, and then we have a retreat, uh, to follow. So right at seven o'clock, um, with shipment and good, so, uh, sort of put that out there.
Okay. Okay. All right, Ann, Lee's.
Ready now? Um, so in the world of curriculum, I was really excited to meet with the middle school curriculum fellows last week. And I meet with the elementary curriculum fellows and the high school curriculum instructional leaders this week. Um, and really our focus this year with regards to those committees, um, and, and leaders will be to identify sort of where we left in the curriculum writing process pre-COVID. Everything sort of, uh, wasn't necessarily put on hold, but there were some modifications and, and, um, changes that were made. Um, and so we're, we're looking to really reboot that, um, process. So working with them on identifying where they are on a five-year cycle. Um, and then that will really help me with regards to setting budget priorities, uh, with the upcoming budget and, and, uh, you know, how, how we'll prioritize those plans moving forward. Um, we are still work, working really hard at developing our, um, teaching and learning hub. Uh, I mentioned that at the last meeting, it went in front of the original committee who began the design over the summer last week for feedback, and we got some really great reviews and also some good feedback. So we're still continuing to tweak it, and it will go in front of building principals this week for their feedback. Um, and we'll continue to refine, most likely right up until the day it rolls out on October 8th for staff at our halfway PD, at which point they'll have an opportunity to have some, um, guided interaction with the hub on how to use it and how aligned to sign their professional learning goals for the year. So we're really looking forward to that. I had, um, a really good time this weekend diving into SBA data. Um, I, I had mentioned that, um, we met with a D earlier in the week who gave us some guidance on how to do some cohort analysis in our, um, raw data. So dove into that a little bit this weekend, um, and sort of in my preliminary analysis, we're really paralleling some of the state, um, trends with some surprises. So I'm looking forward to potentially bringing that to AAA in October, um, and, uh, talk, talk a little bit more about that, how that data is used, um, with other data points at the school level to drive instructional decision-making to a classroom. So looking forward to bringing that information to you, um.
So I'm sure, I'm sure that the full board is going to be very interested in, in hearing that as well, but I think it's good to have.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, we'll do that too. I talked to Jeff a little bit about that.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Annalise.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Ariana, anything?
No, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
Good question on that. On, when you're doing the SBA analysis, um, if you could look at, you know, if we did have students that took the test remotely.
Yeah.
If you could, yeah, look at that, or are you looking at that?
I am looking at that. Um, the, the numbers are really small. Um, so statistically, it might be difficult with regards to comparison, but I will do my best to sort of demonstrate to you the, you know, um, the result of students taking them at home. I will tell you that the state, um, chose not to include those results in their, um, broader analysis.
Interesting.
Because they are not necessarily, not that they're not trustworthy, but they haven't proved that they are trustworthy. Interesting, yeah.
Actually, in conversation with the state on that, they're, they're, uh, sending me a report on that because some of the initial, there's a reason why they didn't include it. Um, but, uh, they're testing out whether their assumptions on that are accurate.
Exactly.
The interesting thing about it is that the students that took the test remotely were scoring higher than the students that took the thing in person.
Right.
So there's, um, some indication that perhaps they were developed a skill in, uh, self-initiating and self, uh, advancing their own learning, you know, and thus led to higher test scores. So that's a, it's an interesting bit of, uh, introduction. I don't think that we.
That's kind of where I went.
Or they put it on more comfortable at home. I'm interested to see, uh, you know, what the state comes out with. I know that they're still looking closely at that, so I am interested in hearing more about that.
You know, it's a, it's a very interesting thing. Um, I don't expect you to answer these two questions, but when you do your work with the curriculum, uh, if at any point you could clarify or basically talk about the, uh, theory of cognition that underspur your curriculum.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, uh, it'd be interesting to see like, you know, what rationale for like, what is the cognitive process that's underlying your critical decisions? And the third question, again, you don't have to answer this, but at some point down the line, if you could, um, basically identify what you see as the, um, overarching outcome of the curriculum. I mean, aside from the fact that people are learning history or English grammar or math skills, but those are wrapping up to some higher order cognitive outcome that, uh, basically cuts across everything. And if you could, um.
Are you talking more like the cross-cutting transfer skills?
Yeah, like you might get in the, um, NGS issues where you have like a cross-cutting concept.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, what would be the cross-cutting outcome that comes across all curriculum?
Sure, no problem.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ariana.
Just a couple of items. One, we're gearing up, hopefully sending out the budget stuff next week for twenty-two, twenty-three, which has been crazy, it's already salary rollover.
Right.
The next year, so that'll be coming shortly. Um, just wanted to give you guys an update on our claims history for our health insurance. So we went to the partnership plan in nineteen-twenty. So, and as we know, in March, we were hit with the pandemic. So if we look at our historical claims, um, starting with twelve thirteen, we were roughly at the seven to eight million mark. Um, last year, nineteen-twenty, we were just under, um, we were at seven point three million, and that's in large part due to uninsured, uh, the pandemic and people not going to the doctor, you know, limiting, um, the access to the doctor. And in comparison with our claims, it was not, we paid out nine point two million. So it seems like, okay, that would have been a great year if we were self-insured, then we would have had, uh, premiums. However, this year, our claims were ten million.
Hmm.
So on me now, I'm sure due to the fact that a lot more people are going to the doctor, we have two very large claims that totaled two million. So then we're back to going the other way. So really, the partnership plan, um, is, you know, a better plan, um, our employees, uh, prefer it. It gives us, um, it gives us, and, and this year, the, for twenty-one, twenty-two, or, yeah, that we're in now, our rate, our increase was only one point two five percent, which is, we have greater, um, stability and alliance on rates. It's a question of, for self-insured, and we're getting increases in the twenty percent and high twenty percent. So, um, I still think the partnership plan is really, um, um, working well for us, and they do, um, tailor the rates by counties, so which is a great thing. So we're not, um, factored in with the Fairfield County where their, um, the cost is far higher. Um, they do it like, so, um, I don't know if anyone had any, um, specific questions. I just wanted to let you know, um, kind of tell you where we were headed. And again, um, it just gives us more consistency.
That's good.
So I read them.
Yeah.
And I couldn't make any sense of them. And it's not for you, it's for me.
Yeah.
Where are we in the overages? Like, what do we owe?
Oh, so this is the health insurance claims.
Right. I know it's different. I know that you owe the town money.
Yeah, yeah, we talked, you talked about it at FFO, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's still like questions about where we're going to end up. So.
Yeah.
So I was, I tried to figure, if it's not you, it's.
Yeah, no, no. So this document was prepared with me. Yeah, so this is just kind of where we are, the historical points. That other document is the, what is called the internal service. Because when we were self-insured, so you guys may remember, we were constantly, we were running out of deficit all the time. And I think it stemmed from, if you look at that claims history, you look and you see in twelve thirteen, twelve fourteen, we were at like six point, averaging six point five million, twelve fourteen, fifteen, it went to eight point two million. That was a huge hit to that fund. So that fund, if I recall correctly, looking at the financial statements, went into a deficit. And we were constantly trying to make up for that deficit, but we were also getting higher claims than, and than expected than we were putting in. So that's when we decided, you know, we're going to go with the, um, state partnership plans. We can have some reliable premiums and, um, not take the hit from these deficits. So what that seven hundred thousand represents on that sheet is what is the deficit in that fund right now? That was never made.
But is that, that, is that the towns that's the, or the boards?
No, it's, um, a combination. And then it's broken out. So it's pro-rated by the members.
Okay.
So the member contract. So obviously, we have far more, um, members. So our, um, so that proposal is that seven hundred and eight thousand, and it's pro-rated, um, between the town and the board, obviously, before having the larger, uh, portion of that deficit. So, and we just talked about, about these, you know, things as to how funding and trying to.
It makes better sense, but I was, I don't normally go to FFO, but I always look at their agenda. And this one, I was, yeah, kind of a hard time with. Usually I could figure it out, but, all right, thank you.
Okay.
And then the only other item is tomorrow, um, where I, I'm implementing some changes in our first purchasing, um, process, uh, within internally. Um, one to prepare in advance to prepare for our municipal implementation, um, because there's going to be far more, um, you know, more approval process, uh, more of a workflow. It's all going to be electronic. So, um, in a little bit in light of that, I'm wanting to kind of prepare everyone. And so I'm implementing or reviewing the processes with the administrative assistants tomorrow to, um, put that same process in place now in the paper format, but just so that they are, you know, ready to go when we're implementing this. So starting that process and then the end of the year process, just changing that a little so that gives us in finance a little bit more time, um, because I do have that march, uh, the, the old BDO one report that's due in September or so. With the deadlines being so close to June thirty, if I need to. That's about it.
Good, great, okay. All right. Uh, see, that, that brings us to committee reports. I think, Eric, I think we covered FFO pretty much.
We did, except we did cover, we did review the revenue, uh, accounts that we go through quarterly, every three or four months, we go through. And, uh, just talk about, go through each of the accounts and make sure we understand what we are, when what's happening in each of them.
All right. Hey, um, board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody have a comment? Jamie?
I have two. Okay. One, um, it was very nice to see so many, uh, staff at the, um, Daigle Suicide Walk.
Hmm.
Two weeks now, I think it's been. It was great to see everyone, um, supporting that. Um, and also I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out on Saturday to support the Miracle Weeks Oyster Festival. It was fabulous. The day was gorgeous.
Hmm.
We sold out of just about everything that was there. Um, it was packed. It was beautiful, and I saw so many faces. It was nice to see so many people there. It's out for a great cause. So I'm hoping this was the best one we've had yet, and for sure, that will help us out. But that's it.
Perfect. Excellent. Anybody else? Comment? Candace?
I just want to echo the sentiments. I had written that down, too. It was really nice to see so many people participating downtown that walk. So thank you all. And hopefully next year, we can get even more people involved. I think that that was great. Um, I also really enjoyed the dirt presentation. Um, I think that that is such a powerful, powerful presentation. Um, I, I was listening to some of the feedback from the kids trying to watch it, though. I think that we need to take a look at the audio situation, because I kept hearing that reiterated that they couldn't hear certain parts of it. So we might want to just take a look at that if we're going to be streaming more often. That way, it's kind of more, you know, that they can hear it a little bit better. It, I think that it differed depending upon where you were in the school from what I'm getting. And then too, it would have been nice to, I, I think that they did have a good turnout, but I think that more parents and families, um, next time around, maybe advertise it a little bit more, put it out a little bit more. I will certainly try um, to help with that, because it really is so beneficial to see it. And I kind of feel like some people really missed out on a great opportunity, uh, community opportunity for that. So hopefully next time you can do that.
And if maybe you all could help.
And maybe you all could help out too, because next Thursday night.
Yes.
Um, that uh, Alicia Pharaoh, yeah, she, she really did a nice, great job with our staff.
Yes. And I think that that's going to be another really great um, community opportunity too. So yeah, we will try to help to push that out.
I think we only have like seven that have registered so far.
Actually, we got those seven right after we put, put it out.
Okay.
But I think, I think that's what we're wrapping up here to say.
You should think of that.
No, because that's going to be a great opportunity. And just the last thing that I wanted to say was a shout out to Andrea Scott. She's done a tremendous amount of work. She did come to the last AAA, but I did just see today that they had uh, put something out to uh, recruit volunteers for some of our older students to participate in our after-school programming, which I thought was a great opportunity uh, for some of our kids. And I know quite a few that are raising their hands to do that. So it was a great uh, idea on her end to facilitate that. I think it'd be great.
Yeah. Yes. Anybody else?
I, I, I just wanted to make comments. It's not lots of data or anything, but I happened to be in touch with a pretty good sized group of recent grads and the overwhelming feeling that I got from them is that they were well-prepared for um, their college experience. And they were feeling pretty good about uh, about what they had for classes and so forth, the experiences at Eastline High School and, and and you know, all through their learning experience here. So um, again, small data set, but it was good news. So I figured I'd share.
And nice to hear too. So that was nice for sure.
I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Okay, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Kate.
Just we haven't heard anything about the Chinese school. And I think you have a nice good update on that, is you know, how that's functioning. It's a.
The Sunday uh, Chinese school. It's, they're running virtually.
Yeah.
Yeah, through at least January. So that, that's, you know, that we haven't heard anything else from them.
Okay.
So if I won't for, for a while, I don't know if they'll ever come back. I guess they might stay virtual permanently. Okay, yeah.
I knew all Kappa on that, the spiral too. You know, if, yeah, that's gonna be dormant or how we're gonna look at that um, going down.
Can we ask for an update though, from the president of that nonprofit, the Chinese school?
An update on how.
How they're doing, that whole community, it's a whole, it's a whole, I mean, it's a, it's a big part of our culture, I think.
Yeah, why don't we talk offline? I can get a little bit more information from you to see. Is there, yeah.
Just curious. I don't know. I think.
Yeah.
Cause I, I came by one time on a Sunday just to meet some of the participants of that program. I was really impressed by the instruction, the interaction, the quality of the community. This, I thought it was reliable.
Okay.
Live. Amazing.
Good. Yeah, it's a good program. They do, uh, they've done, each other, and their membership is, you know, hundreds, I think.
Yeah.
It's, you know, all around the community. So, okay. Anybody else?
So um, just to circle back around the science, we do have forty-five people registered.
Oh, good.
Oh, good.
High school, three, three at the middle school.
Oh, wow.
Three and four. So about seventeen at the elementary.
Now, is there any way to livestream it or is there a way to, I don't think you can tape it, but you can't tape it. Right. Is there a way to livestream it?
Um.
I think you have to get permission from her to.
Yeah.
Okay. In the past, we have actually recorded and posted. She's been.
Did she allow you to? Really? Cause I know you're using Melford, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So she has allowed us to um, videotape and post. The only concern, it would have to be just the talk, obviously, right? And then stop right at the end because there's lots of personal questions.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'll double check with her.
Okay.
But um, she's been amenable to that.
Okay, great. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
At least have it taped and posted on the website.
Okay. Sounds good.
I don't have anybody in the high school. So I kind of don't know what's going on as far as who this person is and what she's presenting.
Yep. So um, the link to the flyer was in one of the updates, update number three, I think, but I can send it along to you. Um, uh, Dr. Pharaoh's a cognitive psychologist out of, um, actually she lives right in, um, Old Sabra. And um, she's a longtime colleague of mine. She does a, a number of talks across the country on lots of different topics, um, really about um, raising youth and uh, really tech influence world. Um, and, and a real power pressure world. Um, so she has her own practice. She draws on a lot of experience in the work that she does with um, youth that she works with through her practice. Um, and you know, um, develops really strong messaging. Uh, and she's really, she's got really kind of actionable steps that parents can use um, at home to support kids as they struggle through, uh, you know, some of the environments that we unintentionally create for them, right?
Right. Like the daily living, the daily athletic, the academics, all of the pressures that are on our students for sure. Yeah.
So um, she, and I find her to be, as a parent, um, I've, I've been, you know, utilized many, many of her parenting tips and tools at home with regards to the influence of technology empowering me as a parent um, to make, you know, the, the tough decisions. Um, because in the end, the fight is worth it. It's, you know, ultimately, if those structures, what kids need kind of thing. So that's really what her messaging is all about.
Yeah.
I found it to be, I just want to add just really quickly that I found it to be very um, interesting too, because now we just got that um, report back. And one of the uh, comments that kept being reiterated was that we are a high-achieving school district. Okay? And the pressure that comes along with that and the expectations that come along with that, not just on students, but on teachers and on families and really the impact it really has. But it was very interesting to hear that the, that comment kept being reiterated by different segments and different groups of people, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I think that the perfect timing for this to kind of come in um, for self-reflection and also to hear other people's stories and you know, find ways to navigate to help our students and our children the best way. So I am super excited about it. I think it's going to be great. Yeah.
Just a real quick question followed up after Pharaoh, that she wrote in the book, if she talked to her. Can I look her up and find out more about her?
Um, you can Google her. She has her own website. She talks about her own personal story and some of.
Is it F E R R E L?
F A R R E L. Alicia, A L I C I N. So it's a good question. I haven't, if she has, I haven't read any of her books. I don't.
I apologize. I was on vacation.
No, that's okay. I know she's done a lot of research. So there, that she might have published some, some research articles, but I'm not. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you might, you'd like her, kid. Yeah. She really, she's nice to have with her staff.
So you got some?
Yeah, I forgot. I was going to mention this earlier too. Um, this whole um, TikTok thing is kind of burning me up with, with, um, and that's, I'm not even dealing with it as much. Um, but I, I think that um, I don't know how much we have in place and I'm, and I know that, that, you know, in terms of educating students about social media consequences, um, you know, the, the, there's just so many things and it seems to be becoming more and more common on how social media, how much power it has to influence decisions that are, you know, impacting lots and lots of lives uh, in, in a negative way. Um, and it's becoming a norm that I don't like to see. And I don't know what, what in terms of curriculum or educating kids or teaching kids more about that kind of thing. Um, I, I think we, we, we should be aware of that and working on that because um, to have one person be able to influence billions of dollars worth of damage, not countless hours of time redirected uh, over some silly thing is just, that's scary. That's, that, that can happen. That couldn't happen before. That was not something, there's no, no kid had the ability to steal thousands of hours away from our education system to be dealing with discipline and stuff, not to mention the, the financial costs.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, well, I know it's, it's, it's a part of the curriculum. It's in, in various ways. And I know, like, I was talking to uh, SRO Hall too, who does some of the work as well. But this is a topic I really, I one hundred percent truly believe is, needs to be partnered with supports at home. That we can, we can educate kids on how to make the decisions, but ultimately, we don't make the decision. Put the device in kids' hands. So there's that, that's where really I think that partnership comes into play on, in working with parents and in educating them. Because hon- honestly, I, I think at a, at a very, you know, when we start to create habits at a very young age, it's hard to go back from that.
Yeah.
So early intervention around good habits of the use of technology and devices, both in school and at home, is really ultimately going to be the, the um,
Yeah.
you know, the right approach. So we consider you doing additional work with families and truly, you know, this is a topic of passion of mine, if you had. It absolutely, um, technology does influence the brain negatively, um, depending on the type of technology that ha- that kids are accessing. And so they're not talking about the technology they use in school, talking about the technology they have, they interface with the, all the hours after school.
The Snapchats, the TikToks.
Instagram.
I mean, it is, it's intense, but I, I really do think we're at a place where as a community, we need to explore more.
Hmm. And have maybe a, like a community conversation about it too, right?
Yeah.
It's a different, it's a different world we're living in. We're, 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 that much can happen with.
Yeah.
Someone's, someone clicks send and all of a sudden, you know, the next day.
We have.
Don Hall does do, you know, part of the challenge for her, he does internet safety for, for the grade levels, but it, it's one piece. And there's so much more that, you know, for parents, especially. Yeah. Don Hall, Don Hall, who comes in, he's the officer that works and does the challenge program, he's the dare program.
I'm just wondering if they would, if they would be interesting in partnering more to have a community conversation.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Jill seconds the motion and, and uh, all those in favor signify by saying, all right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good point, so. Good points.